Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the City Council and I'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for November 22nd to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Cunningham is absent. Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson is absent. Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno is absent. Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Councilmembers Johnson and Conno are not here today because they're representing the city at the National League of Cities Conference in San Antonio, Texas. And Councilmember Cunningham is out because he had a family emergency and we send our thoughts to him and his family. The agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments from councilmembers to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next you have the minutes from our November 8th meeting for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. That carries and the minutes are accepted. Finally, is there a motion to refer the petitions, communications, and reports to their proper committees for the next cycle?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say no. That carries and those referrals are made. Before we proceed to the regular order of business, I do want to stop and recognize Councilmember Reich, who will be reading an honorary resolution today commemorating Representative Diane Loeffler, who recently passed away from cancer. And I'll note that her services are tomorrow and our thoughts are with her family and so many people who saw her as a mentor and a friend. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. It is with heavy heart that I would like to say a few words on behalf of our colleague, Representative Loeffler, who served us so ably. But I think, oh, and just so people know, her celebration of life, which will be a full community event, not surprisingly in a community neighborhood gym at Eastside Neighborhood Services, like so many things that she presided over, so appropriate, from 1:00 to 4:00 tomorrow. And all would be welcome, of course. And I have to give special thanks to Mr. Aniri for a lot of the fact wordsmithing. It was difficult to focus on such an established career, but you did it well. And of course, you know her so well, being at the Capitol, shoulder-to-shoulder, fighting for the interests of City Minneapolis for so many years. But I will reserve further comment for tomorrow and read the formal declaration honoring Diane Loeffler. Whereas Diane Loeffler, a lifelong resident of Northeast Minneapolis, passed from this life on Saturday, November 16, 2019, concluding her many years of extraordinary leadership, public service, and community activism. And whereas Diane Loeffler was a graduate of Edison High School, Oxford University, and studied at the University of Minnesota and developed a passion for public policy and a community advocate, staff person for the city, Hennepin County, state of Minnesota, and the League of Minnesota Cities as a member of the Minnesota House of Representatives from House District 60A. And whereas Diane Loeffler was an active in her neighborhood by serving on several local organizations and committees, including the Central Avenue Planning Committee, the Northeast Library Supporters, and the Wyndham Park Citizens in Action. And whereas Diane Loeffler served in the Minnesota House of Representatives from 2004 to 2019, during most of her legislative years, she was a member of the committees that had jurisdiction over taxes and human services and was an assistant majority leader. And whereas during her service in the Minnesota House of Representatives, Diane Loeffler was dedicated to helping Minnesotans who are the most vulnerable. And from her life experiences, understood that government policies could open opportunities as a way of improving people's lives, authored legislation related to healthcare, children, the elderly, property tax relief, and local issues. And whereas Diane Loeffler is a member of the city's legislative delegation, authored legislation related to public finance and local building projects, including parks and trails and bridges, and the protection of the Mississippi River habitat. And whereas Diane Loeffler, throughout her career, took time to support and mentor new leaders at the neighborhood, city, regional, and state level, and hopefully passing on her enthusiasm for public service to all. And whereas Diane Loeffler was considered by her fellow legislators to have an in-depth knowledge of a variety of topics, was passionate in her work and considered to be a fierce advocate and powerhouse, and a supplier of fresh flowers from her garden to her fellow legislators annually. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, the city council hereby presents this honorary resolution to celebrate the life of Diane Loeffler and to honor her many contributions to the city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota during her lifetime of incredible service. That the mayor and city council extend their heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of Diane Loeffler, together with her best wishes and hopes that they take comfort from her life of purpose, service, and joy. And this will be presented formally to them tomorrow at their service. Given the gravity moment, I hope my colleagues would indulge a moment of silence. Thank you ever so much, Council President, for this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. What a beautiful tribute to Representative Loeffler's life and legacy. Next, we will proceed to the regular order of business, beginning with the reports of our standing committees. The first committee report today is from the Committee of the Whole, which will be presented by the Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole brings forward one item today, which is a staff direction outlining the future of the Arts and Creative Economy Work Group, and I move approval of this item.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a new license. Item number two is a bond issuance for educational properties for Northeast College Prep Charter School. Item number three are 15 parts of special levies relating nuisance conditions and unpaid fines and fees especially associated with the Tenant Remedies Act. Item number four are liquor license approvals. Item five are the renewals. Item six are the gambling license renewals. Item number seven is a license settlement conference conditions. And item number eight is a contract amendment with Hennepin County relating to cost sharing for MFP, Employment and Training Services. With that, I'll move items one through eight for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Enterprise Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. The only item coming forward for approval today is an agreement with LexisNexis. It's a database for criminal investigations, and I move that for approval.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing eight items forward for approval. The first is a land sale at 914 19th Avenue Northeast to Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation. This is for a net zero-three-bedroom home. Second is a land sale at 4105 12th Avenue South, also to Greater Metropolitan Housing Corporation. Third item is authorizing forgiveness of some accrued interest to Harriet Tubman Center for affordable housing loans. The fourth item is authorizing a contract with Build Wealth and also extending other contracts with Neighborhood Works Home Partners for the homeownership Minneapolis program implementation. Fifth item is approving contracts for culturally-specific capacity building to assist with homeownership in the city. The sixth item is authorizing our 2029% low-income housing tax credits for three affordable housing projects in the city. The seventh item is probably our most significant affordable housing funding action of the year. This is our annual allocation of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This is over $18 million this year, which will support 12 projects throughout the city. And the final item is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Hennepin County. This is to continue our partnership with the Office to End Homelessness. I'm happy to take any questions or make any comments, but I will move the committee report in its entirety.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. That will be given by the Vice President, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward two items today. Item number one is a resolution regarding the federal policy on asylum protections for women fleeing domestic violence. Item number two is the 2020 legislative agenda and policy positions, and I move both items for approval.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
The next report is from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, and that will be given by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Council President. The Public Health or the Peace Committee is bringing forward 10 items. And I know for the first item in particular, the Committee Chair Cunningham is sorry that he can't be with us here to celebrate this historic occasion when we are passing an ordinance that would ban conversion therapy in the city of Minneapolis, being the first city in the state to do so. Second item is an ordinance amending our Green to Go ordinance. Third item is an ordinance that would add regulations to carryout bags in retail establishments. The fourth item is approving appointments to the Transgender Equity Council. Fifth item is accepting a grant from the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority to develop a health dashboard for high-rise residents in Minneapolis. Sixth item is accepting a grant from the Department of Health. This is for outreach to vaccine-hesitant Somali parents. The seventh item is authorizing the council to enter into a contract, a master contract, with the Minnesota Department of Health for health services. Eighth item is authorizing a contract with Innovation Power Systems for a community solar garden installation. The ninth item is authorizing a contract with Practicum through Bethel University School of Nursing for internships in the school-based clinic program that the Health Department operates. And the 10th item is passage of a resolution that would commit the city to being a child-friendly city, in association with UNICEF USA, and we'd be the first city in the United States to do so. I will happily move all items forward. I also would like to move a staff direction on item number three that you should have before you. This is, I mentioned this in Committee of the Whole, this is directing Public Works, Regulatory Services, and Health Department, along with Community Planning and Economic Development Staff, to create an outreach plan to raise awareness and support for residents to bring their own bags when shopping, with a report back in the first quarter of 2020 on the plan and actions taken, especially those to moderate-income residents and understanding the new rule and resources to help them more easily bring their own bag. So if I could just move that staff direction as part of the report, I would appreciate that. And that's from Councilmember Jenkins and myself.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. In addition to that, staff direction before us on item number three. Is there any discussion? Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I will speak to the motion that Councilmember Gordon and myself are offering, to really just try to address some of the concerns that I think may be present that goes along with the five-cent fee for bags at the grocery store. We want our staff to look into how we can create more awareness and opportunities for people to access bags, to be able to, low-income people to be able to access bags, to make this a much more successful program. And so I hope that my colleagues will support that. And then I want to speak to item number one, the conversion therapy ban, or as I call it, the conversion abuse ban. I just want to thank all of the partners that have helped us to get to this point. And really want to just lift up my colleague, our colleague, Councilmember Cunningham, for his work on this ordinance. He was tireless and really very thoughtful in bringing together a large group of community members and advocates from the faith community, specifically want to call out Outfront Minnesota for their activism and support. We conducted surveys around the metro region and throughout the state, really engaging people in this issue and creating awareness so that other cities may be able to take up this ban, we hope, and then eventually leading to a statewide ban. So congratulations to all the advocates who showed up on Monday. I think there was over 40 people who testified in support of this ban, and so it has really been a very heartwarming community effort to protect our most vulnerable residents in the city of Minneapolis. So thanks to all.
Thank you. I put myself in queue because Councilmember Cunningham asked me to read a statement from him. He's not here today because he's with his family mourning the death of his nephew, and he would have been here if there was any way he could have. And I just want to say it's an honor to read these words from my colleague. Conversion therapy, which is actually conversion abuse, is a blight on our country. It is tantamount to torture. It has been denounced by every major medical, psychological, and psychiatric association, yet kids and adults alike are subjected to this cruel practice. Many are drawn into it based on lies and fictitious data about the efficacy of this practice in changing someone's sexual orientation or gender identity. Plain and simple, conversion therapy does not work. In fact, it causes tremendous trauma to those subjected to it, particularly youth. Factual data on conversion abuse demonstrates increased hopelessness, loss of any sense of identity, depression, anxiety, substance abuse disorder, suicidality, and more. Our young people deserve so much more than this. A statewide conversion therapy ban was brought forward by Representative Hunter Cantrell and Senator Scott Dibble this last session, but legislators made this effort about partisan politics rather than protecting our kids. I believe that we should continue to push for this change at a state level, but also believe that where there is opportunity for us to save lives, we must. I ask my colleagues to please support passing this ordinance today because we have a moral obligation to step up where partisan politics at higher level of government have failed our kids. I ask for other cities and towns to also step up for the children and young people across our great state. Today, Minneapolis; tomorrow, Minnesota. The development of this ordinance has been truly a coalition effort. Councilmember Cunningham wants to thank his co-author, Council Vice President Jenkins, as well as a work group of city staff that included Eric Nielsen, Christina Kendrick, Sarah Sheal, Coral Gardner, Tract Trachtenberg, Frank Reed, and others. Thank you to the clergy who were steadfast in these efforts, and representatives from MPS and youth-serving organizations. A special shout-out to Outfront Minnesota for their partnership. We couldn't have done it without you. Thank you all, and thank you to my colleagues for their support. Are there any other comments on this agenda? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted unanimously. Thank you for everyone who came today to celebrate this moment with us and all your hard work. That brings us to the next report, which is the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. That report will be given by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. Peace is a tough act to follow. The Public Safety Committee brings forward five items today. The first is a DWI court grant for police liaison and DWI defendant monitoring services. Items two and three are mutual aid agreements with Ramsey and Anoka County Sheriff's Offices, respectively. Item number four is appointments to the Police Conduct Review Panel, and item number five is approving appointments to the Police Conduct Oversight Commission. I'll move all items for approval.
Councilmember Fletcher has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report will be from our Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that report will be given by the Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards nine items today for full council consideration. Item one is the Hoyer Heights Residential Street Reconstruction Project Approval Assessment and Area Way Abandonment. Item two is the Capitol Project's Closeouts and Appropriation Revenue Adjustments with the city's Capitol Project Enterprise and Grand Funds. Three is a request for proposals for parking meter equipment and management system. Four is a request for proposals for planning and engineering services for Hennepin Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. Five is the mutual aid agreement with the public works agencies for training, preparation, and response to natural and man-made disasters. Six is the Cost Participation Cooperative Agreement with Hennepin County for the North Loop Reconstruction Project. Seven is the Southwest Wyndham Residential Street Reconstruction Project. Again, the designation, cost estimate, and setting to public hearing. Eight is a contract amendment with Custom Product Services for Stone Prose LLC for sidewalk and parking lot snow clearing, removal, and ice control services for special service districts. And the final item is a contract amendment with Meyer Contracts Incorporated for Hennepin Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Right.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report from our Ways and Means Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings 12 items for approval today. Item number one is a gift acceptance from Independent Sector for Staff Travel and Lodging Expenses for the Chief Equity Officers Roundtable in Chicago, Illinois. Item number two is a gift acceptance from Outfront Minnesota for tickets to the Outfront Gala. Number three is a bid for elevator and escalator maintenance service project at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number four is a contract amendment with BND Associates LLC for increased costs for masonry work for the public service building project. Item number five is a contract amendment with Grazini Brothers &amp; Company for increased tile and stonework for a public service building project. Item number six is a contract amendment with Schindler Elevator Corporation for additional elevator work for the public service building project. Item number seven is a contract amendment with Le June Steel Company for additional structural steel supply for the public service building project. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Kevitt Companies for underground utility work for the public service building project. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Premier Electrical Corporation for electrical work for the public service building project. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with Danny's Construction Company LLC for structural steel work for the public service building project. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Modern Pipe and Ink for mechanical work for the public service building project. And the final item is a contract with Prefold Ink for Workplace Systems Furniture, also for the public service building project, and I move approval of all 12 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward three items for approval today. The first is approving an alley and easement vacations for the property located at 600 608 612 8th Avenue North, as well as 550 10th Avenue North, 1,000 and 1,010 Lindale Avenue North, 800 through 8,012, excuse me, 800 through 812 North 7th Street, as well as 804 7th and 1/2 Avenue North. Number two is the approval of a rezoning located at 817, 819, 821, 825 West Broadway Avenue, as well as 1828, 1830, 1832, 1836, and 1838 Bryant Avenue North. And finally, the third item is the passive ordinance dealing with intentional communities and cluster developments, and I move all for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't know if Councilmember Gordon also wants to speak on this, but I'll be a little bit more specific. I had the good fortune this week to take a look in person at an intentional community that's been created in the 6th Ward that used to be in the 7th Ward in the Elliott Park Neighborhood. I think there have to be many different models to get at people where they're at. I have long been a fan of the tiny house intentional community model. I've had a number of conversations with the good folks at Henepin County Medical Center and prior leadership who have been working on this for a long period of time. This is simply figuring out a different way for people to live. It might not be the way anyone in the room would want to live. It might be the way people in the room would want to live. Quite frankly, very wealthy people are living in 300-square-foot luxury microunits, and they think that's just fine. So I think it's really incredible that this is moving forward. I want to thank Councilmember Gordon for his work on pushing this through. I think this is one step in the right direction to create different kinds of housing in the city, and it's something that we should embrace, and hopefully we'll get a pilot project up and going sometime soon so everyone can see the model can work as we work towards housing people who are the hardest to house and have the most barriers to housing. We shouldn't be standing in the way and being an additional barrier.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate those comments. I just wanted to share some of my excitement about this, my gratitude for the co-authors, Councilmember Schrader and Ellison, for working on this, but really, this is one of those ideas that didn't originate from here. I think what we really need to do is acknowledge the community members that stood up and brought this forward. I really want to commend Street Voices for Change and all their allies for stepping forward with this, especially Bill Walsh from Health, who really helped, I think, carefully bring this project along. It's one of those ideas, originally, when you hear about it, you could say, oh, that could never work here in the city of Minneapolis, could it? We don't do that here. But then there was a willingness to come in and talk and meet with the city and come inside and discuss with people, and I'll admit, when I heard that, too, I was hearing the voices of our building administrators and other bureaucrats here, ready to see, okay, this is really going to be a problem. But there were some hurdles to get over, but really what we had to do was look at our rules and change our rules, and I really want to commend our city planning department and Middel, who wrote the staff report and brought this forward, and did such a fantastic job of laying it out and also creating a framework, I think, that will help make this something that people, these, something that people will value having in their communities and their neighborhoods and will work in the city. So I'm excited about that. I'm sure there's lots of other folks to thank. I know that the Minnesota Design Center was very involved in this and helping do prototypes and those kinds of things, and I understand there's going to be more opportunities for people to see one model of how this might work, but actually, the rules we've set up would make a variety of things possible, and it's going to be nice to see when one gets created and when we can prove to everybody who might even have concerns about it how fantastic this can work in our city. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate everybody's work on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think Councilmember Gordon did a great job of thanking everybody, so I also want to just kind of extend, you know, my thanks and appreciation for everybody that worked on this. I'd also like to extend it to kind of our two staffs of Carleen and Robin, who worked a lot on this. And I think besides just the hard work you put in, just I hope you understand the importance of what you've done. We're finally here. This is finally going through now, after so much work from Street Voices for Change and all the coalition partners. It takes a lot of work to be a pilot. Like, this is a project that, kind of to lift up what Councilmember Goodman said, you know, it is something that would, may not work for everybody, but in the words of Street Voices for Change, this is a solution we want that will work for us. And that's really powerful. So you have a project and model that basically will meet some of the highest standards for environmental, as well as affordability, and that takes a lot to do that. So again, thank you for that, and hopefully we'll see much more of this in the city.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else, so I added myself to just really echo what has been said so far and thank the authors, Councilmembers Gordon, Schrader, and Ellison for their work, and especially in really centering Street Voices for Change and the folks in the community who are bringing their lived experience to help us solve the puzzle of how our rules are preventing us from, you know, meeting the needs of our community in every way. I think it's a good example of how community and policymakers and staff were able to come together and think creatively about how to fix our rules and get those barriers out of the way. And I just really want to lift up the work of Middel Duñez, the planner, who really led this work, and planners don't get thanked a lot, but just bringing the innovation forward and doing this in a relatively quickly timeframe, taking an idea that was complicated and had a lot of moving pieces with the building code, the housing code, the zoning code, you know, desires of community, melding them, and figuring out how to make them work within our regulatory framework. There's an art to that, and I look forward to seeing your work grow in the future. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Ellison.
Sorry, this is what happens when you don't bring your computer, can't get yourself in queue. But, okay. I know that a lot of things has been already sort of extended to Street Voices, but I just wanted to echo that and say that, you know, throughout the city, we all deal with constituents who, well-meaning or not, have their preconceived notions about folks who are experiencing homelessness, have their preconceived notions about folks who are maybe recovering from addiction, or folks who have a criminal past. And I know that this intentional communities won't solve only that problem, but I know that you all bring that perspective of saying, of doing the hard work of saying, your preconceived notions are unfounded. People deserve a place to live. People deserve shelter. I think that we on this bench, we get elected, and we do our best to promote that message. I hope we do, but nobody's going to be able to deliver that message better to our communities than you all who are on the ground and experiencing it. And I just want to thank you all for your work on this, for, I know I've seen you at some of my public meetings. I want to thank you guys for showing up to those and being advocates for diverse housing types, for housing of people who the system has deemed hard to house. You guys are doing that work, and I would just really want to lift it up because we can't design programs like this, pilots like this, if we're not centering the voices of the people who are most affected, and you guys let that voice hear. And you're not just doing the work on behalf of yourselves. I spend, I try to make a monthly practice of going to Youth Link to spend time with the youth there, and I can tell you that the work that you all are doing is going to benefit everyone who's experiencing some kind of hardship here in Minneapolis and in the metro. So just to echo everyone else, I just wanted to extend that thank you, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further comment on the agenda before us? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are ten ayes.
That carries, and the report has also been adopted unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for celebrating. I think it's important to pause and take that moment to celebrate. The next order of business is a report of special committees, and we do have a report from the Executive Committee this cycle that will be given by the Council Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee sends two items to the council this week. Item number one is the reappointment of Robin Hutchinson as the Director of Public Works. This includes a referral to the Transportation and Public Works Committee for the setting of a public hearing. Item number two is the appointed position in the Finance Department of the Director of Investments and Debt Management. This item is slated to be referred to the Ways and Means Committee for further consideration, and I move approval of the Executive Committee report.
Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those items will be referred to the appropriate committees as described by the Council Vice President in the next cycle. The next order of business is a notice of ordinance introductions. We have notice from Councilmember Gordon, who will introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending Title 22 of the Code of Ordinances related to parkland dedication to modify the definition of affordable housing units to address inclusionary zoning units and projects using income averaging. Are there any questions about that notice?
Goodman.
Councilmember Goodman.
Madam President.
Yes, it sounded like you said it was being introduced by Councilmember Gordon, and I just wanted to clarify for the record, I believe that's being introduced by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, everyone. Councilmember Goodman, thank you.
Madam Chair, I guess I should tell folks what this is. As we move forward with our inclusionary zoning ordinance, as well as changes at the federal level, which allow this really unique thing called income averaging, which is a way to, instead of have 50 and 60% units, have some 80 so that some can be 30, I want to make sure that the exception for the park dedication fee covers those units as well. We want to encourage 30% units, and one way to do that is to have some 80% units, and we also want to make sure that the units within inclusionary zoning, not all of the ones that are not affordable, are also exempt from the park dedication fee.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our apologies for that mistake, and thanks for your work on this. I do, since we're talking about it, I think important to note as well that both councilmembers and our staff have been in touch with the park board, policymakers, and staff, so this is being done in coordination with them, as was the original ordinance. Thank you. So that notice is given, and no other action is required. The next order of business is resolutions. We have the Honorable Resolution commemorating the life of State Representative Diane Loeffler that was read by Councilmember Reich into the record earlier. Are there any further comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the resolution is adopted. Finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from councilmembers? I don't see any. I will then announce that Councilmember Gordon is celebrating his birthday. I want to wish you a happy birthday, Councilmember. We won't sing, we'll sing later. We'll sing in the closed session, so no one has to hear us. Mr. Clerk.
I'm sorry, Council President, but on the agenda, there was a section for motions. We have a motion from Councilmember Gordon to discharge an item from the Housing Policy and Development Committee and to refer that matter instead over to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, with an item that was previously introduced and has been referred to staff. We needed to change formally the ownership by which standing committee, so that motion is on the agenda. It was introduced by Councilmember Gordon. My apologies for missing that.
Perfect, no problem. So let's return back to that. So this is on the printed agenda under the order of motions, and this is a motion by Councilmember Gordon, as described by the clerk, as item number one. So I'll go ahead and move that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.